Welcome everybody, first item on the agenda is the presentation of the colors by Angel Eyes, NJR, please rise. The face. Preset. Color.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation and your God and your people with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Color. Red. Cup. Panama. March. Right. Face. Oh. March. Cadets, if you would, y'all may be seated cadets, if you would, please introduce yourself, tell us what you're asking and talk to us about your teach plans.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Jason Smith, I'm a junior and after high school I plan on listening in the United States Navy.
Good evening, everyone, my name is David Nguyen and after leaving high school, I would like to come to U.S. as a teacher.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Sean Popper and after I graduate, I would like to come to the Navy.
Good evening, my name is Jose Barago, I'm a junior and after high school, I would like to come to the United States Marine Corps.
Thank you, Jim. Next item on the agenda are the district recognitions that are turned over to Dr. Williams. We are going to make a foot minor adjustment, the first item we're going to recognize will move down a little bit, fuck that, in just a moment, so we will move on to, we have, we're proud to have with us tonight, the executive director of the Georgia High School Association, Dr. Robin Heinz, I would ask Dr. Heinz to come forward as we get to recognize one of our most beloved elements, Ms. Panware, to hear about the awards she received, which we know she's received many throughout the years, but this is a state award that is recognized for her national, Dr. Heinz.
Good evening. Thanks. First, a full disclosure, I want to say that I love Panware very much, and I have her many years, and she's been somebody that I've looked up to throughout my whole career. You know, I knew of Panware long before I knew Panware, because she won, and she won a lot, and I was involved in music and drama throughout my career as a student, and then of course, put a whole lot of stock into it both as a, as a coach, as a teacher, as a principal, and as a superintendent, and so, anyway, it just gives me great pleasure to be here, and I just want to talk about what this award is first, it's the Outstanding Speech Drama Debate Theater Educator Award, and this is done through section three, which is all of Florida, Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee, Mississippi, Alabama, and Louisiana, and so, here's what, here's what the criteria are, overall contributions, service both to curricular and co-curricular activities, organization and continuance of activity programs, significant ongoing contributions in film, and contributions to the profession of in and out of the state, and when I read that, I knew immediately that of all folks that we got, Panware's going to be the one that we're going to nominate for this, and with that being said, I'm, I'm just going to read a little bit about what we wrote to help her make this award, but Panware is one of those rare people that becomes a living legacy, and we all know that's true, no wonder the GHSA has been around long enough to remember anything without her appearance at Ganges High School, certainly, nothing about her stops at various high schools, leaving the State University before Robin and Ganesha, what we do remember is she was there with a strong established program in both one act play and literary year in and year out, a glance back at old records confirms that her students were winning, and they were winning often, however, there was much more to Pam than just wins, she's the ultimate team player, there are so many coaches and directors that claim her as a mentor, and I'm one of those, former students now in the profession, to young coaches just starting out around the state, to coaches in her region that she's glad to have out as well, she respects the game, fine arts, and teaches the game with dedication and a tremendous work ethic, and she feels the game is bigger than any person's success, she's thrilled with winning, she's very competitive now, but she's also thrilled if another coach that she's assisted or mentor does win, while most educators look forward to that magical number of thirty years in retirement, Pam is nearing twice that, and she has no plans to quit at the moment, you know, forty-five years a year has to be some kind of record, and even though Georgia's allowed, and she may need forty-nine percent, you know, when it counts, she's here all the time, and she's doing what she needs to be doing, and she still is an all-day teacher in my mind, and she does one act play with her area as well as extra river. One act play, one might have taken Pam to say, I don't need this, but she was there sitting on the front row, she's not only involved in discussion, but asking tough questions, making us think as well as everyone else, she's worked through all the changes, types of plays, that some feel are guaranteed to win, et cetera, and just continues to produce students and performing excellent plays, interpretations and speeches, always with good literary value, her hard work and exuberance is contagious and can definitely be seen in her students, the Georgia High School Association could not have a better nominee for this prestigious award, which she won, you know. This is the Outstanding Speech Debate Theater Educator Award presented to you.
And I think in the audience, we have quite a few former performers from Ms. Ware as well, but some are retiring tonight, that tells you everything, Ms. Ware, congratulations, great job, continue to impact, getting many, many kids and families, and more than anything else, our community, so, thank you, we also, this evening, this is the largest group we've had in over fifteen months, and over the last year, we've been able to celebrate our retirees in, in a very smaller setting, and so tonight, we are able to celebrate our twenty-twenty-one retirees, or as I think I shared last week, or before last, our group, our graduates of twenty-twenty-one, and so what I would like to do is bring forward some of the principals, and we call the names, we're going to kind of group these together, we do not have any retirees from Centennial nor GPA this year, we do however, have a third of our retirements from another, so I would like to bring up Dr. Wesley Roach, as he can give the gift that we give all of our retirees, as I call them one at a time, if you will, please come up, stay up here with the gift that we give you, so that your family can get pictures, as well as pictures with the board, so Alvin Noda, not everyone is here, but Alvin Noda, Artif Anzola, please come forward, Ruby Clark, Marilyn Cotton, Margaret Dowdy, Beth Esther, and Robin Martin, please join me congratulating these retirees. As we group a few of these other schools together, I would like to ask Ms. Penelope Brown to come forward, Dr. Crystal Brown, Ms. Bertha Shields, Mr. Jamie Green, and Ms. Penny Fowler. We do have some retirees from middle school, but they're not able to be here this evening, so Miss Premal will let you stay back there, so from Fair Street International Academy, counseling students for a number of years, Dr. Emily Paul, please come forward. Donna B. From New Holland Health Academy, Mary Price. And from Ganesha High School, Nancy Ball. And here I love this flower, it's all green flowers. Every year, we'll get to celebrate those that retire, we know that impact on many, many, many lives in very different roles, sometimes in different districts, but hopefully in most cases, you'll retire from one place, and to be your red elephant is an awesome thing to do tonight, with the board office, in addition to the transportation department here at G and Wander Wees, we get to recognize, I believe, well over a hundred and twenty-five years of service to Ganesha City Schools, out of these individuals that I've already selected, ladies, please join me as I call your names, Ms. Sarah Bill. Wanda Bullard. Beth Nitenbach. Melody Tarrow. And Ms. Winnipaw. We were celebrating these ladies a couple of weeks ago, and all of us up here, and many of you in the audience, know how much these ladies contribute this, out of Ganesha City Schools, some will make you coordinate for the evenings event, without them. Some other retirees are not able to be in attendance tonight, from the middle school, Mr. Burton Duff, Deanne Neilwire, and Jody Stroud from the high school, Bob Thorne, Sally Jackson, and Gilkeen, let's give all of our twenty-two-one retirees. We moved the first item down, and it looks like we do not have our body for our star student, Ms. Lu, but there's a good reason for that, Ms. Marissa is our star student, she won the city, she won the region, and she is finishing up an interview for the state opportunity to be our state star student, so we will have plenty of opportunities to recognize her graduation this Friday, so if you have a chance to see her graduate or please join us in the museum, Mr. Stewart, those are the regulations.
All right, we got any more comments, I think you have one, for those of y'all who attended the Bachelor Art this Saturday at Lincoln Baptist Church, a great host, ceremony went well, thank you Ms. Fowler, and Ms. Green for putting that on, thank you, the ladies for being our hosts, I coincidentally did run into Dr. Tom Smiley, his lunch right after that, I think.
We do, we had one citizen comment that came in virtually, I had related to kindergarten graduation, so I will follow up with the parent, and where I will copy one of these one. That's even, we are about to begin our business force training, we have time period, if you wish to do so. All right, we have a motion to adopt the agenda, motion to approve Roman five, six, and seven, and a motion, that's second, Ms. Mitchell, all those in favor, which carries. Next item on the agenda is the items of information by departments, Dr. Williams of Handling Governance and Operations with regards to the signed Ganesha City School System local legislation, the board if you remember, back before the winter break, we petitioned our local legislation, the carries forward, HP seven forty-two is what it became, and it basically gives us the opportunity to school system, but all of our previous amendments under one house rule, so in this case, it was presented by Matt Dooney, and we appreciate Representative Carey for us, we also appreciate the support of our local legislations, so this is the final adopted and signed local legislation for Ganesha City Schools. And thank you to Mr. Smith for putting that on the forefront of, back in the fall. Next item on the agenda is the ESOL endorsement plan, Ms. Ray, as Ms. Ray comes forward, if you read an email I sent out, it has probably been a month ago now, related to our ESOL numbers and our goal at the school system, to be a fifty, seventy, and ninety percent of our teachers being ESOL certified in the next four years, utilizing CARES Act, so Ms. Smith will share a little bit of that plan with us.
Absolutely, in order to make that known, we're just referring to one of them, we have partnered with the university for a project, and we're now a university to provide the ESOL endorsement, ESOL means for English speakers and other languages, it is three courses where teachers will learn how to meet the unique needs of our students who are in the process of learning English, the classes will start September thirteenth, we decided to arrange it so after school has started, in order to let the teachers start those courses, to get them kind of, kind of settled in, and we planned it back around, I believe, April twentieth. The cost of the, of the three courses that the teachers will be taking is a thousand dollars, and we are also going to be paying them a thousand dollars for their time in that, for a minute, that's all, so any thoughts, questions?
Anyone who is currently ESOL, we're still receiving a thousand dollars as well.
That's sign, they basically gave that after the, happened they didn't sleep.
So, and they asked us to utilize the CARES funds in a creative way to serve after its populations and needs within the district, it's very hard sometimes to get the numbers you need, and with us being thirty percent of our students as English learners, we felt like this was a major investment, and a good use of the CARES funds to carry us forward, to really impact all of our students, because I believe we're all aware, we may not have specific ESOL classes, but the more strategies we have in our toolbox to use, we will, we will encounter students and do those strategies, and so, all the schools are submitting names to us now, we're at about thirty-five, sixty percent of the district now, and so our goal by the end of next year will be fifty, which I believe will be above that quite considerably.
And we have hundreds of new plus teachers through this press conference already.
Okay, will these instructors come to us, or will go to those camps?
They're actually going to be all online courses, so they'll be able to, and they're not going to be on a set day per state, they're just going to be able to go at their own pace.
So, I'll give you an example of the way the high school tends to do it, and Mr. Green and my mom, but they're going to do it by department, so a couple of departments take it on as a group, and they embed it inside their POCs that they have on weekly basis, so you kind of have the online component, and the reinforcement of what's happening inside the POC, we know that our teachers are extremely busy, so online format will work best. Any other questions? Thank you for coordinating, yes, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Mrs. Allen, covering policy, the first reading of policy JDC regarding the transfer of withdrawals of students, Mrs. Allen.
Good evening, everyone, I am presenting to you the first read of JDC transfer withdrawals, if we take a look at the requirements for student transfer, we have a revision, simply because I've driven out codes and the legal references, we know they're accurate or needed, and the revision of the statement where it says agency placed students, this is, this is to reflect the S provision regarding children in foster care, who are no longer considered to be an M B C, it's from a Canadian.
Did anybody have any questions? This will sit out and require further decks, and we'll bring it back to you in a minute. Mrs. Allen, to continue with you, the first acts, and I will with the second reading and the final adoption of policy JDC regarding school admissions.
Okay, again, this policy is a new policy which focuses on twenty-twenty-one inflation, requiring a local work policy in which certified teachers can appeal their annual evaluation rating, this includes other certified staff, which are non, non-takes cover, under policy G A D complaint, the group is, so this is a new policy, only reverse certified teachers.
Motion to the top, got a motion by Mr. Smith, I hear a second, got a second by Ms. Mitchell, any other further questions? All those in favor, motion carries, thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Policy G B I regarding teacher evaluation, I remember the ones you just went over, yes, so the motion effect, you just might like to apply to, okay, yeah.
So, the, the policy JDC for school admissions, this is the second reading and final adoption, and again, we struck out underneath education for homeless children and the youth, awaiting foster care placement, because it is no longer part of the law.
Motion to the top, got a motion by Ms. Smith, I hear a second. Got a second by Dr. Mead, any questions or comment? All those in favor? Question carries.
Thank you.
I believe, hey, interrupt the meeting, but I think that's our, our two, I mean, I think that's awesome.
I'm okay.
All right, I have the sub item number three, district insurance coverage, Mrs. Bev, as you're well aware, Ms. Bev, come forward, we do have district insurance coverage for a couple of items, workers comping one, and then liability and property on the other, the last time we put this out for bid was in twenty-fourteen, so we actually intended to put it out a year ago, coming in, Mrs. Bev.
After putting it out and having a couple of work with us and recommendations, we're running for recognition of the federal insurance forward to the insurance board, the best represented by charter of this year, for a annual premium of two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-four, and the property and liability, as well as the cyber security risk insurance to G S D A, this management fund, and that's combined costs, we're going to convert two thousand six hundred, so our annual premiums for all the insurance is like five hundred and forty-seven thousand eight dollars.
So, we did use a consultant in this process, because it's not something that we do that often, so we did partner with a consultant, and in this case, the recommendations that are before you are the same providers that we use now. Oh, Ms. Bev, did I, did I read your report correctly, that each of these coverage categories are for one year?
This is the annual premium, they're, they're renewable every year.
They, they are renewable without board authorization? It doesn't matter, that's, that's what we've done the past.
That's what we've done.
Yeah, so that's why it's been seven years since we did it last time, yeah, that's not, I just wanted to clarify.
Every year, they, 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 they need a free.
Yeah. So, Dr. Williams, to show our fellow friends in the community who are insurance brokers, but in case they engage us, how long will we do this? I'm comfortable with our three to five years, seven a little too long, when I came on board four years ago, you know, we're kind of middle of that, and we had a lot of other adjustments we were making, so we put it off a little bit long than anticipated and go ahead, so I would anticipate a three to five year review, but it depends on where we follow, workers comp and property and liability, we feel like we can get a better deal out there when we go market soon than that, but by doing it now, we at least assume the process, because neither of us. But by doing it now, we at least assume the process because neither of us were in that role seven years ago in our school system doing it this way.
And this is coming from workers comp, is that what this is? From what we have been battling, they are competitive. They're competitive with current.
Well, yeah, a solid security component to your policy.
And that one was a little tricky because it's fairly due to education. So that was some discussion that we had to have as a district insurance officer.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Smith. Did I hear a second? Got a second by Dr. Ramsey. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? Question carries. Final item under action items is the presentation of the April 2021 financial statements.
This is our April 2021 general fund statement. Our revenue for month are four, over four million, four million, sixty-seven, six hundred and sixty-five thousand. Our expenditures are six hundred and six hundred and nine two thousand. That is expenditures over revenue of two point six million. And totally expected because our at the one tax revenue, so of course, our balance has time for receiving those. So basically down to keeping the revenues and T V T. Our annual, their day revenues are sixty-seven, over sixty-seven million. Our year day expenditures are sixty-two point two million. So our year day revenues over expenditures are four point seven million, and our annual fund balance is twenty-one point nine. This time last year, we were in the balance twenty-three point seven with ninety-two percent of revenues collected and total expenditures of eighty-three point six percent expended. Our total revenues collected at this point are eighty-eight point four. But remember, we did adjust our budget last month, so that did break down the total percentage collected as we actually updated our revenues, our budget revenues. I mean, we may not have done that last.
Revenue still outpaces expenditures.
Motion to approve of the potential. Got a motion by Mr. Smith. I hear a second. Got a second by Dr. Mady. All those in favor? Oh, so Ms. Bev, can you give us a quick glance at our new budget schedule?
Sure. We are ten thirty, about June seventh.
June the seventh, and then we will have our first year on the fourteenth into the final two years in the twenty-first. So that, that part has not changed. We knew that our advertisements will be pushed out just a little bit because of the tentative adoption, but we will have it in that Saturday.
Thank you, Mrs. Bev. Before we return to the top, are there any discussions? All right. All the board members are going down front so we can recognize our star teacher and our star student. At this time, Mr. Jamie Green, if you will come forward, Ms. Lu, Dr. Carnati, please come as well. It has definitely, I know, been an exciting time to finish up this high school journey. And nothing like having a Zoom interview before a board meeting to get recognized. We're not going to ask the speaker to get put on the spot, but I will turn it over to Mr. Green to talk a little bit about our star student and our star teacher. So if you don't want, please just turn to the next side of the room.
Okay, well, it's an honor to formally introduce this year's GHSA star student and star teacher. To obtain the star nomination, graduating high school seniors must have the highest score on a single test taken on the SAT and be the top ten percent or top ten students of their class based on GPA. This year's star student is GHSA senior Marissa Wu, and she has selected Dr. Chandra Carnati as our star teacher. After receiving the high school nomination, Marissa was selected as the representative of Gainesville City, which included Lakeview and Riverside Military Academy. And from there, she was recognized as one of two finalists representing the thirteen school systems of Region Two. Dr. Carnati is the consummate professional. He's a role model for his students and his colleagues. He's played a leading role in the development and success of our nationally recognized AP program where he teaches AP computer science principles, AP computer science, AP calculus, AP, AP calculus, PC, and AP research, all of this I have had on the full period day. And each of his programs, student enrollment is a direct reflection of the composition of our student body. But Carnati understands that all students can be successful. He's taught at GHF for over a decade, although his daughters have graduated the high school. And his wonderful wife, B G, is our most trusted and requested parapro. Channing arrives late, sorry, arrives early and stays late. Never missing opportunity to help. He recently completed his doctoral degree and published his thesis on differential type of functioning in teacher-created benchmark mathematics. Simply put, he's interested in how the test that we created as teachers reflect our biases and thus harm our students. This work is really important in making sure that we are able to accurately assess our students and ensure equitable outcomes. It speaks to the kind of person he is. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Chandra Carnati. Marissa has accomplished so much during her time at Greenfield High School and has taken full advantage of the opportunities we make available to all students. She's taken nineteen advanced placement courses, earning an A in each and every one. She's completed the world language pathway, the fine arts pathway, and the advanced studies pathway. She's the president of the National Art Society, National Art Honor Society, Beta Club, Chinese Club, Co-Club, and Wood design. She's the co-president of the President's Club, vice president of the Key Club Math Club, and the new Alpha Theta Math Honor Society. She's also our first GHSA state championship in the state's highest classification, seven A. This year, she won the best overall in rhetorical essay at the state literary league. She's out of the Coring, standing number one out of four hundred and eighty students. And she'll be attending Stanford University in Palo Alto, California this summer, this fall. In addition to these achievements, I want you to know that Marissa is funny. She has great friends. She is a great friend. She's interesting. You can have a great conversation with her. She can have a conversation with just about anybody. She's sweet. She's made significant commitment to serving others, and we're truly sad that she'll be leaving us. But of course, we're excited to see what she will achieve out there on the west coast. Please join me congratulating our star student, Marissa Wu.
Okay, everybody, since they're ready, welcome to the car. I wish to Mr. Smith. Got a second by Dr. Ramsey. All those in favor?